It looks like you do have a quorum today.
Good, I was just looking at that to see who all was here.
Before we get started, I wanted to take a quick moment and introduce Kelly Sheets. She's on the call today and she is going to be helping me with all of the MACs and tax moving forward. And then when I go on maternity leave in March, she will be your main contact until I return.
Okay.
And you'll start seeing her name on the emails back and forth.
Sounds good. Welcome.
Thank you.
It looks like the waiting room is cleared. If you want to go ahead and start, I'll turn it over to you.
Sounds good, appreciate it. Good afternoon, everybody. Dr. Burchett here and just like to go ahead and get started with the meeting. I'm of course the Chair of the TAC and I think we've got all of our members present. If I saw the participant list correctly, Dr. Compton, Dr. Munson, Dr. Sawyer, I see on there, and my missing Dr. Upchurch, did he make it on?
I'm here.
Okay, good deal. Fair enough. Well, since we have a quorum and all that, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. And first order of business on the agenda, of course, is to look at the last meetings minutes. So, does anybody like to give a motion to approve those minutes?
Steve Compton, I'm moved to approve.
Second, Steve, good. Thank you, Gary. Any, any questions about the minutes, everyone, or everything seemed pretty straightforward to you all from them? Well, hearing no, no discussion needed there, let's vote for approval of the minutes. All in favor of approving them, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. So the minutes were approved from the last meeting. Thank you all. Uh, so jumping right in, the, the little bit of old business we want to kind of touch on, I know we've talked about it for some time now, is the the conversation or the communication back and forth with the Kentucky Board of Examiners so that the Medicaid Department can know when our licenses are renewed in a timely manner without having to send a lot of paperwork back and forth. Just looking, is there any update from the department on anything that's been happening with that?
Hi, this is Jennifer Dusky. I'm the Director for the Division of Program Integrity. I do have an update for you. Um, this was something that we too had worked on for some time and it just had some difficulty getting the right connection with the board and I think due to some technology changes that were taking place and I think my understanding is still taking place. But they, we have set up a system. I believe we've already done a test file transfer. And we have a process in place that beginning January, the week of January 2nd through the last week of February, the, we're gonna get, I guess, another batch. And then the plan will be quarterly to receive a file. Um, so like I said, I think we've, we've done the, the initial one. And, you know, beginning in January, it should be a pretty seamless process if everything goes okay.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Thanks for the update. Any questions from the, from the TAC on what was discussed there, presented?
Hey Matt, this is Carolyn. And how, just out of curiosity from the department standpoint, how are we gonna know that that is a go ahead, that, that we're good for next year's license? Is that gonna be communicated to the K O A, to our membership? From the state board, from the Medicaid services?
Um, so communicated, and I mean, I can tell you now that the process is in place, so it should happen. I'm not sure I understand what more you're asking.
So how will our providers know that? We know that on the call, but our providers are used to providing that license every year and uploading it. How will it now be communicated that they do not have to do that anymore?
We will put a messaging up in Portal, so anytime we have any type of change like that, we can, we can message out to providers through Portal. Um, and then there's also a newsletter that goes out to providers. We can have that information placed in the newsletter that is issued as well. Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions about that topic? Okay, if none, moving on then. I'm gonna touch base with the V S I S, just to follow up on a couple things. First thing is, and on just their, I'd like to know about their termination and re-credentialed process. I know we've talked about it a few times. But it seems like it, it continues to happen. I'm looking for the right word to say, or continues to happen unexpectedly, I'll say, to some providers. So could you give us, Nicole, could you give us an overview of that, please?
Sure, sure. So the process does continue to improve with some process improvements that we've implemented to ensure that the appropriate communication goes out to the providers when they are due for re-credentialed. Uh, when a provider, a provider is re-credentialed, re-credentialed once every thirty-six months, if I remember correctly. Um, and prior to the re-credentialed period, or I should say, once every three years. Ninety days prior to the re-credentialed period, we do send the provider a notice to notify them that the re-credentialed period is coming up. If we don't receive anything back from the provider, there is a second attempt to reach out to the provider that is actually placed via call, I'm sorry, with a direct contact to the office. Um, and at this, and then if we don't still receive anything thirty days prior to the provider's re-credential date, then that's when our Provider Relations staff will get involved and reach out to the practice. If the provider does not re-credential successfully within the required timeframe, unfortunately, we do have to term the provider in accordance with our contracts with, with, with the, with the M C Os and C Q A criteria. We cannot have a provider in the network that has not been appropriately re-credentialed. Um, and then at this point, once they are termed in the system, when they come back, they do come back as an initial credentialed provider. So that is our, that's our current process that, that we are working under. But again, we have implemented a number of process improvements to help the providers along the way. Number one, with notification that they're due for re-cred. Number two, with educating them that of the re-credentialed process, we do hold a monthly webinar in which all of the providers who are due for re-cred receive an invitation to participate in that event. And we go through very detailed explanation as far as what is required, what's needed, like the deal, the, the disclosure of ownership form, the, the practice information, if any of that applies. So we go through a very detailed process during that orientation. And, and then again, we do get the, the P R reps involved if, if we don't have the appropriate time, if we don't have the information in time for re-cred. Send it to your question, Dr. Burchett?
Mostly, I know one of my providers was I think terminated back at the start of the year. And we got no notification on.
Yes, yes, yep. And that, that, that did occur unfortunately. Since then, again, we, we've implemented a number of process improvements. Um, and then we also did work with your office to, to secure and get the provider reactivated as quickly as possible. So we always request open lines of communication. If, if you, if you see something, if you know of something, please give us a call. The P R reps are there. You know, for the providers, a lot of you still have my number, my, my cell number, please let me know. We will do whatever we have to do to make sure there's no disruption to care.
Well, I appreciate the, the update. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions on that piece of the information there?
I just want to comment because we got dropped and we had no notice. This sounds like it, if it, this system's in place and it's actually happening, we'll, we'll fix the problem. I guess if somebody else gets dropped, we'll hear about it.
Yes, and if I, if I may add in, Dr. Compton, in addition to the process improvements, we are also doing additional reporting to our M C O partners so that they also have oversight and a better eye as, as to the going on of re-cred and, and credentialed also. So we've added in a couple of new reporting measurements with some of our M C O clients. So just FYI that they're, they're keeping oversight of it also.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nicole, this is Dinah Bevingson with the K O A. When you're talking about, hey, good talking to you. When you're talking about the additional reporting and the oversight, is a V S I S maintaining copies of the notifications and whatever format that they are sent to the provider? So when a provider would request, let's say in the future, I know in the past is the past, but in the future, will there be, will there be proof of that communication that they can then request?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, that, that information is housed within the provider's profile so that we do have access to the information.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I assume it will be you again talking about the next item, credentialing, the timeframe for processing credentialing, say for an initial provider.
Sure. So for an initial provider, in, in accordance with the contract with D M S, we have forty-five days to credential a clean application. A clean application again is defined when we do our orientations and also our monthly webinars. We also go through the process of a clean application for providers that are, for practices that are bringing new providers on. But a clean application has to be completed within forty-five days. We set our internal clock to thirty to make sure that we're meeting that goal. And again, that is a measurement that I do report out on, on a monthly basis to, to some of the M C Os in Kentucky.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is we also had a provider that we tried to get credentialed in January and it took till September to get them credentialed. And we kept asking what was going on and we were just told that we needed to submit information that we didn't submit. But when we go back and look at the initial submission of information, all the information that V S I S was asking for was submitted on the initial January application.
Okay, and have you been in contact with your P R rep to discuss that specific issue?
We have, and they just told, they, they helped us through it, but we had to resubmit things that we had submitted nine months ago.
Okay.
On the initial application, that's what I'm saying.
Is your team using the C R, is it the C Q L? Help me, Leanne, the, the C Q L. Thank you, C Q, yes, that one. Too many acronyms out here in, in healthcare. Is your team using that application as your base?
We do.
Okay, okay. So I don't have the particulars, Dr. Burchett, for your case, but as long as the P R rep was involved and they did step in to assist you with, with resolving that. And again, I think you said back in January, so we have implemented some process improvements since then to improve that overall process. But again, open lines of communication as soon, you know, if that, that fifteen, twenty day mark passes and, and you haven't heard anything, please, you know, give us a call, send us an email, send us how text message, whatever, you know, works best for you and your staff and let us get on it. As soon as we know about it, you know, then, then we can, we can resolve it. We have our operations team, which credentialing kind of falls under operations, and then we have myself and the, in the P R reps. And we're more so the ones that are in the community and, and fighting for things to, to, to make sure that they're running smoothly. So please let us know and then that way we can make the appropriate adjustments internally.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And on, and on that, I've got just, and it, I didn't have it on the list because it's just been happening to me, but since I have you here, I have, I hope you don't mind that I ask.
Okay.
We have had, we've had a terrible time with our providers being dropped from the Correct Optical Lab portal.
Oh, okay. I've heard about this, yes.
Yes, yes. And I've asked numerous times on the email chains that are going back and forth between everybody for an explanation of why it happens and I've not received one.
Okay, yes. So I, I, it was brought to my attention. I know that we are working with Correct Optical, as I understand it, and Leanne, please tell me if I state this wrong. But as I understand it, Correct Optical has identified a glitch within their system. They do have their I T teams working on resolving the issue. But it is, it's a technical issue that unfortunately, Correct Optical is experiencing.
Yes, Nicole, that's correct. Dr. Burchett, this is high priority.
Well, and, and I'm glad it is, but I'm, you know, if it's happening for me, I assume it happens for other people. And it's happened for several years that every four to six months, two or three of us get dropped from being able to submit glasses through the portal.
Okay, and I'm sorry, did you say four to six, every four, it's been going on for six years?
It, let's know, it's been going on for maybe a couple of years now.
Okay.
I'd have to go back and ask my billing department exactly how long, but I know it's been quite some time. And it seems like it's, it's a couple of years and it's every three to, to six months, they'll tell me, hey, we can't bill Dr. So-and-so or we can't submit Dr. So-and-so for glasses now. And then they have to contact and get people reinstated and things like that.
Okay, all right. So I know again that we're working with Correct Optical. If you can give us an opportunity to get a summary of their project plan to resolve it. And then I can share that with you, Dr. Burchett, or the, I can share it with the, the TAC Committee. Because as Leanne stated, it is a top priority. We do understand the inconvenience that, that, that it puts your staff through. And we want you to be able to submit the, the services, you know, especially with Correct Optical. As they're our provider or primary provider in Kentucky. So let, let me get with them to get the project plan to work it through and then I will, will follow that up within our notes for you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I'm getting another message from Leanne. Leanne, can you, can you talk to the workaround process?
Yes, Dr. Burchett, I'm, I'm sure you're aware, but I want to mention that your office is a bit, does have the option to fax the orders directly to Correct, and I understand that you're receiving the glasses in a timely manner. If you're not, please let me know.
As, as far as what it, what a timely manner could be, I think so. Everything seems to be slowed down nowadays, not just Correct, but most labs, but yes, we have been faxing them in and, and that's, that's been working okay. I think it, it might take a little longer. And along the way, there might have been one or two that were overlooked by faxing them in, but I, I, overall, I think we've been able to get the glasses. It's just frustrating to have this continually happen.
Oh, yes, I understand. Please know I'm, I'm working on this and asking for updates every day, so I hope to hear something soon. And I'll be in touch with A N G. We've been working closely together.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's, uh, thank you, Leanne and Nicole for updating on that. Does anybody else have any thoughts or anything that they would like to chime in with on that, on these particular things before we move on? Hearing none, we'll move on. Next order of business, new business, and I think Steve, this comes from you because they talk about these no-show situations in the MAC. But do we have any idea how many no, optometrists are reporting no-shows? I think was the question that we might have asked, or that we're asking the department.
Anyone on from Policy? If not, I know, Dr. Burchett, I know we can make that a data request and we can get that information to you. I know Policy has been working on gathering those for different TACs who have requested it, so we can, I can take that back to their acting director and see if we can get just that group of providers pulled and get that information to you.
This, this is Kelly Kitchen and I'm from Policy. This is the first TAC meeting that I've attended. The others that were supposed to attend, we're not able to attend today, so I'm attending in their place. I will definitely make a note and get that to the director and see if we can gather that information for you.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Thank you all for looking that information up for us. I apologize, looking at my, my notes here, I skipped one of the old business items, if we can go back. I greatly apologize. March Vision. I have thought about it since we talked about it the first time, and I still have some reservations about the way that you all suggested that we handle medical refractions. If I remember correctly, we were told that we could upcode another level to cover the refraction. But if that's the case, then A, that's not quite correct, because you know, if we get audited and we look at the, at the information on the particular case, then it's not gonna prove to be that.
Hi there, this is Tanya. I'm not you're cutting out. I, I didn't hear any of that. I'm not sure if anyone else is kind of having in and outs, but I, I didn't hear any of that.
This is Nicole with the V S I S. I, I heard you just find Dr. Burchett.
Okay, appreciate it. Basically, can you hear me now?
Yes, I hear you.
Tanya?
Yeah, I can. I, it's okay, everybody's cutting out. As long as Dr. Edmonds can hear you, I think that's the most important for this topic. So, Dr. Edmonds, are you on?
I don't see anybody underneath that name, Tanya.
Yeah, this is, this is Ann Ritchie with, with March Vision Care as well, and I, I did hear the question. So I, I think maybe Tanya's just experiencing some, some phone concerns. But yeah, Dr. Edmonds has been heading up that medical refraction and is the right person to answer that question. So I've just pinged him to see if he's able to join back in. I, I, I do see his, his number listed on the screen. It, it, it seems like maybe he had to phone in. But, but perhaps he's not able to, to unmute himself. So perhaps if we could come back to that question, if that's possible, and, and we'll see if we can get Dr. Edmonds on the line.
Okay, well, yes, and we, we can, and I'll just, I'll say just a little bit more about it and then we can move forward unless somebody else has more to say. But basically, I just don't feel comfortable being told to upcode a, a, a medical visit just to cover something that's already on the fee schedule as a covered service. I, I don't think that's, that's kosher on billing etiquette, to be honest. And it bothers me that, that I was asked to do that. That's, that's my, my statement. So, anyway, does anybody else have anything to say on that? And then we can come back if Dr. Ritchie gets on.
This is Jennifer with Program Integrity. I'm just wondering if you could tell me who instructed you to do that?
It was the one that, the doctor that we're seeing if we can get him on here.
Okay, thank you.
But what did he ask you to do? Like what, what was his instruction?
He said that you all do not cover refraction under a medical exam and that we should just upcode the, the next level of coding to make up for it.
Okay, I'm not gonna speak to anything, but he, he had sent me kind of an explanation on that, but I'm gonna wait for him to, to see if he can speak to it and then, and then if not, I can kind of speak to what he had sent to me.
Sure, and that, and that's fine, but that's, that's just, that's just my concern.
Thank you very much. I'll, I'll relay that.
Okay.
Matt, this is Steve. I've, I've got a March Vision concern too. It's not really old business. I don't know if you want me to
go ahead.
Hang it up now while we've got March on the line, so to speak. We've got a little issue. We, we, we all have claims that don't get paid and you get on the portal to see what's not been paid, but it doesn't, as I understand, it doesn't tell you why it wasn't paid. You have to call. Then this happened yesterday after thirty minutes on a call, we got hung up on. Trying to find out what's, why some claims are not paid. It just seems like there should be a more efficient way. I think all the other subcontractors that, that's available on the portal, so you can see what's not paid and why.
And, and who was asking the question?
Dr. Compton.
Hi, Dr. Compton, this is Tanya again. So you should see why the claim is not paying. We do have codes that are listed on, on the rejection or the denied or whatever their case may be. We do have rejection codes. If you have examples where you're not seeing them with the definition, I can certainly have your Provider Relations Advocate make outreach to you so that we can go through those examples and then maybe go on the portal to just kind of walk through our claims and our statements and, and how you can see that information.
Okay, hold on just a minute, my biller's in here.
Sure.
You're not home.
If she could have somebody call me and tell me, because I was telling you yesterday, you can't, I can't see it.
If, if you could have someone call here and tell us, we were told yesterday that you can't find out the reason on there. This is after we made the phone call. And we didn't see it, so.
Hey, who am I calling? Who am I having Elizabeth face and call?
Cindy Holman. H O L M A N.
Oh, hi Cindy, I've worked with you before. And what location are we calling?
Two seven zero five eight six five one eight one.
Okay, after this call, I'll get with Elizabeth Basin and have her reach out.
I noticed wasn't on the agenda, it just happened yesterday, so.
Sure, no problem, no problem at all.
Okay, anyone else with a comment there before we move on? Okay, so the next item under new business comes out because we had a, a provider that was going to have some surgery and needed a doctor to come in and work for them for a while. And we were told, as they were told, as they were researching how to bill for the provider. as they were told, as they were researching how to bill for the provider that optometrist cannot participate in the locum tenens situation like other provider groups can, and that's because it's not in the vision regulation. So we would like to request that DMS add that into the vision regulation for us so that we can also participate that way.
This is Jennifer with Program Integrity again. It's not actually a regulation issue. We only allow locum tenens for general physicians and that is a direction that we have received from CMS. So it's, it's not a regulatory issue, it's a CMS issue.
Okay, in, and maybe Sarah Unger, if you're on, you could help speak to this because we heard, I heard this through you, but I was under the impression that the provider was told that.
Well, the example we were given, I believe Kelly Kitchen, you sent the example and the wording is from the dental reg. So you allow the dentist to do it, so they're, I guess, not considered physicians for Medicaid. So I don't understand why optometrist wouldn't be able to do it also.
We, we do not allow it for dentists. We only allow it for a 64 provider type, which, which is a physician. So I don't know if there's some misinformation somewhere, but it is only the 64 provider type. That's the, that's the only provider type that we allow locum tenens for.
That's correct. I, I don't recall an email stating that dentists are allowed. I only recall an email stating that physician office 6465 is allowed.
So this is Dr. Munson. Are you referring to CMS like federal level laws that define who or who, who isn't a physician? Is that what your guidance is coming from?
So, so not saying what defines a physician. It's just that we are not allowed to allow locum, locum tenens for any other provider type other than a 64 or 65 group provider type, which are physicians.
Okay, because by CMS guidance, optometrists are physicians.
No, that's, that's not what I was trying to say. To clarify, I'm just saying we, local, locum tenens are only allowable for the 6465 provider type.
So how does that get changed? Is that a federal level change or is that a state level change?
Well, our direction comes from CMS on that. So it's, that's what I'm saying is allowable for us. So that would be more of a federal change.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear, this is Sarah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I went and found the email and in the email that I have, it says if locum tenens is not listed in the regulation for a specific provider type, that means locum tenens is not allowed. The only provider types state locum tenens is in the regulation is physicians, dentists and APRNs.
Who's the email from?
I have it from, I think it's from Kelly. So then I went to the dentist regulation and it is listed in there. It did it Medicaid regulation, sorry.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's listed in the regulation, I can tell you that we don't, we don't allow them to participate in locum tenens. If you want to forward, forward me the email, I'll take a look at it and I can provide some clarification. I'm happy to take a look at it. I can put my email address in the, in the chat.
Okay, thank you. And that's fine because then I guess we want to take it to our federal side also because I don't understand why physicians would be the only ones allowed to do it.
Okay, I'll put my email address in the chat for you. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I'm back. I was finally able to get through on the Zoom. If you want me to go back on that medical refraction issue.
Sure, that would be great.
Yeah, so we were not asking you to upcode. That was a misunderstanding. So when you provide a service, when you're doing an EM, an EM code, it's a timed code. So on my EHR, there's a timer that you turn on when you start providing medical care. But if you're going to provide any procedure that you're going to bill separately, be a fraction, a field, OCT, you have to turn your timer off and you can't count that time that's specifically related to that test as part of the medical care time. So when the refraction is not available, so refractions in your state in this contract are only available on a timed basis and can't be done between times. But we all know that medical care with cataracts and cornea problems need, you know, need per effective testing, at least to find best vision in interim times. So when it's not billable separately, you can count that time, whatever that time would be as medical care. So you're not, you're not upcoding, you're just adding the time that it takes to do the refraction to your medical time because you can't bill it separately. So it's not, it's not upcoding, it's just counting your time in refraction, which you normally have to turn your timer off your EHR while you're refracting and talking about the refraction because it's not, you're going to bill it on the nine two oh one five. But when you're billing in the 99 codes and you're not billing it separately, the time it takes, whatever that, whether that's two minutes or 10 minutes, depending on the type of refraction, that's all billable medical care under the EMO, EM coding. Does that make that clearer? And this is not unique to you. I mean, we have this in every state and I practice at Will's Hospital. I do more medical refractions than regular refractions. And, and that's, you know, again, when that, when I can't bill it on, on this breakout nine two oh one five, then it's billed as medical time.
So then going back to that, I have a question for, for the department. If it's listed on our fee schedule as a payable code, does that mean that the, that the vision providers here have to pay those codes?
Well, she's answering, we do pay it. It's just paid at the time interval that it's allowed in the benefit. It's not like we don't pay refractions. They're, they're paid on the, on whatever basis it's allowed.
Sure, but I'm, I'm saying though, if I bill you a nine two oh one five, it's on the Medicaid fee schedule as a payable code. So it should be paid as it's listed on the fee schedule.
But if it's not eligible, the member's not eligible for it, it's not paid.
But there's nothing on the fee schedule that say that qualifies eligibility for it?
Maybe the department can answer that.
I've got another comment.
Sure.
When you're billing, when it's a time type thing, EM code, is it for face to face time with the doctor?
No, the 99 codes actually allow it for prep time, face to face time, and then summary time. So it doesn't necessarily have to be face to face time to get to add to the time. At least that's our understanding. If you're spending time prepping or, or after the patient leaves, as long as you're not breaking, as long as that time's not spent on one of the other billables, like, you know, interpreting the OCT is not considered billable time because it's.
I understand, that's paid separately. So time that my technicians spend with the patient is billable?
In this, in this instance, where you're, there's, where your technician is providing normally billable medical care, just like if your, if your technician does a slit lamp and pressures and, and history, et cetera, all of which is billable medical time. You know, then that's billable time, but you know, medical care your office is providing that you're signing for.
So, never heard, I've always thought that that was accepted. It had to be doctor to doctor, face to face.
Not in the news, since they changed EM coding, that was true in the old EM encoding. But since we changed it on a time basis, it's time, you know, pre and prep, post and time with the pain. Now, again, if you have a technician or a student providing that medical care that you're supervising, it's paying for you. I mean, assuming you're in the office at the time that you're refraction, you're and usually we don't, you know, we have people do medical refraction. We don't have our techs do, they do regular refractions. They don't do medical refractions because that takes.
Almost all of my refractions. But time's not the only thing. You can also bill based on medical decision making and time's one option.
Yeah, but it's the, it's in the new EM, it's the dominant option because it kind of trumps all the other things. Because it's, so you go through the algorithm of figuring it out elsewise, it's just easier to time because you do get paid for pre and post time related to the medical care.
You're the only person I've ever heard say that, but.
I don't disagree with you, Steve. I, I know time is one way to do it, but also severity data and decision making are also the other way. And if you're using that, then you're not really looking at time.
If you use the time, it works out better. I mean, we switched over to exclusively time when that option became available three or four years ago and it works much better. And then in, my EHR has a timer that was added specifically for that because it's just easier to track. As you know, you can do a complicated case and if it's not hard decision making, all that work is not billable because you got to meet the, you know, the three criteria. So it's pretty much replaced, at least in medical arenas, the, the, the old system of history and, and exam and decision making because it's just much, it's much simpler and more progressive to use the time. And again, you have, my time, my EHR has a timer built in for medical care that I'm providing.
But plus now you can work slower.
Well, there's no.
Well, in, in, okay, I mean, I understand where you're coming from on that. But then I still would like some clarification from the department. If it's listed as a payable code on fee schedule, does that mean that they have to pay that, that code?
What's for watching? Does that mean who has to pay that code?
The, the vision provider here.
So.
It was my understanding that if the codes on the fee schedule are listed, they have to cover and reimburse for those codes.
Correct. If there's a code on the fee schedule and you, you provide that specific service, then you would bill based on the codes on the fee schedule.
Well, then that's, that's contrary to what he's telling us then.
And as far as the time based or you can also use the 9597 guidelines for doing your your exams, you don't have to use time basis either or.
Sure. So in that case, Kelly, should, should they be paying the nine two oh one five twos?
I was just looking that code up. If it's on the fee schedule and you can, and I don't have the fee schedule in front of me. But that is, it states as a test to determine if prescription eyewear is needed. And it says determine refractive state is what a nine two zero one five is. And like I said, I don't have the actual fee schedule in front of me, but if it is on the fee schedule, then it is a payable code bill.
Then I would, I would ask that March Vision reconsider their stance on the nine two oh one five.
Maybe some, maybe part of my Ann or one of our team members can speak to how that, how that's contractually listed. So that's not my area. So I know, like a routine refraction for myopia, since a nine two oh four is on the code, can we pay, we pay that every month? If you want to reflect them and do an exam every month, or is that a time to benefit?
No, the, the nine two oh four, nine two oh one four have exam per provider per year limitations.
So does the refraction, at least in the contract that I saw.
Not on the fee schedule unless I'm mistaken. And if I am, I do apologize that I don't remember.
I think it's in the contract, you know, what the benefits eligible. So I guess I don't have my, maybe someone on my team has that information available. But like the, like the exam, the refraction was associated with the time to benefit. But I, again, I'm not going on with what you're looking, we're looking at different, you know, specifications of this relationship. What is the fee schedule and what is the contract that says what the member's eligible for?
Right, and that would be, I mean, if it's not listed on the fee schedule individually that we contract with doctors individually, then it would default to if it's on the Medicaid fee schedule or not.
Okay.
And I would like to just make a comment about upcoding. You know, upcoding is not something that, that's very looked down upon, you know, by even federal government. If you're upcoding and there's an audit.
No one's talking about upcoding. That was not, it was a misunderstanding.
Okay.
That was not, we're never suggesting upcoding. We're suggesting billing based on time for medical services. And refraction is in that category when you're refracting a, a person with a cataract or with a corneal transplant or a medical problem that, that refractive evaluation is part of the medical care. So we're not talking about upcoding, we're talking about paying appropriately for time spent on, in medical care.
Okay.
Then you break it out and bill it under nine two oh one five, then you can't count that time. It has to be subtracted from your medical time. Same with an OCT or a field or any other test that's billed separately. That time prepping, doing the test and, and talking to the patient about it is not billable under the medical time because that's billed separately. So here where you can't build the refraction separately because they're not eligible for that benefit, then it's medical care.
Anybody have any other comments to this before we move on?
This is Angie Parker with Medicaid and I certainly do not know optometry codes or anything else. And we were talking about the fee schedule, so I pulled it up. It is on the fee schedule and it's for one per, one for nine two oh one five, one per recipient per year. So that's all I have to add to this conversation.
That's the answer. But it is sometimes medically indicated more often than that, and that's what I'm saying when they're not eligible.
In parentheses, additional needed if covered if medically necessary. In the Excel format is on the 2022 vision fee schedule. It says one per recipient per year, parentheses, additional covered if medically necessary.
All right, I pulled up the PDF, so it, it was cut off there, so thank you.
No problem. Sorry, this was Sarah with KWA. So I would think it would be separate. So you get the one per recipient per year when you do the vision exam. But if it is medically necessary, it should be paid separately.
Right, with the nine nine code.
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you for looking that up, Sarah. So I would ask for possibly an opinion from the department on should they be paying that code if we bill it medically with a nine nine code?
Let me verify there's not any restrictions in the system for that. So you're wanting to know if you can bill nine two zero one five, one billing for the nine nine code, EM code?
Yes.
Okay, so let me verify if there's any restrictions in the system that would keep, um, keep that from being able to build together. Let me check on that first before I, I answer that.
Would appreciate that. Thank you.
Let's just keep this on the agenda, Matt. I don't, we don't need to drop it.
No, I fully intend to, Steve. Thank you. We'll move on to the next new business. And this is for the department. Is there any update on the proposed vision benefit, material benefit for adults?
I'm actually working the fee schedule for that currently. I believe I have it completed, waiting for it to go through. Excuse me, waiting for it to go through the approval process. I don't really want to speak on it until we have approval.
Okay.
At the chain.
And well, then just a couple of quick questions about that. Is there any timeline for approval on that so that we can maybe get it and get it out to our members in the association so they'll have an idea of what to expect?
I've not been given a timeframe. My side has have everything submitted by next week. So I'm assuming that is so they can do their part in the approval process. And as soon as we have those approvals, we'll definitely be posting it out to the website and make the system.
Okay. Any questions on that?
So if it has to go through the department and it has to be posted, then on the MCOs, have you all been told, Nicole or Ann or anyone, how that would work? If this is effective January first, how it will work with you all?
So we are currently working with the MCOs on the 2023 benefits. We, as I understand it, there is an open. Um, we, as I understand it, there is an open comment period that we're in right now, we've submitted our questions. Um, to, to the MCOs and they in turn have submitted them to DMS. So yes, Sarah, um, where we are working with the MCOs and, and then turn DMS. Uh, to implement the twenty-twenty-three benefits.
Yeah, and Sarah, this is Jean from Anthem. We also, um. We also are doing exactly the same thing, just to let you know.
Okay, so do we think there will actually be something out for January first? Or do you think this will be a benefit that may have to wait until like March before it's really available? What are your thoughts?
I would say January, go ahead, Nicole, sorry.
No, that's okay, nice to see you, Jean.
I know, I hate that we're not together, so again, I can sit around and talk to it, you know.
Hopefully soon, hopefully soon. So, um, Sarah, for the, um, for the, uh, anticipated date or implementation date. Um, we're still working towards the one-one-twenty-three date, um, until, unless DMS gives us other direction. But as, um, we understand it now, um, DMS has given us a one-one-twenty-three effective date. Um, so the MCOs are, you know, updating their member information. We're, um, you know, working through the, the, um, configuration issues so that we can go ahead and, and, and go live with the one-one date.
Yes, and we are doing the same thing, Sarah.
Okay, thank you all.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you all for, for that update. Um, next, I will have just a little bit of time of general discussion. I've got a couple of questions and I know, uh, some of these may not be able to be answered. But, uh, did, and did Anthem appeal the September ninth decision? You're on mute.
Yes, and I was trying to get myself off camera and you decide the bottom and it's over here, I was flipping in the wrong place. I guess the best, I'm trying to think of the best way to answer that we are still in. It's still with the legal department, that's probably the best way to put it.
Okay.
Does that sound okay? That's probably. But I'm trying not to, um, you know, say much more than that because I really don't know much more than that piece there.
Sure. And that's fine, we're just, you know, looking to the future and what we, what we can expect.
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
There, it's a fair question, yes.
Sure. Anybody, uh, have any other things to discuss? At this point? Okay, uh, next, next thing is recommendations and I'm going to throw this out to the, uh, to the tack. I've, uh, I've been thinking about it and with, um, the adult benefit coming through, uh, in this following year. I was thinking about, um. Seeing if we might want to consider making a recommendation. That all the, uh, vision providers for the MCOs. Um, have, uh, a frame kit for adults and children. So that way, everything could be, um, on a pretty even playing field. And I wondered if anybody, uh, had any thoughts to that?
This is Dr. Upchurch, uh, I'm good with it, man.
Okay.
This is Dr. Munson, um, I do feel like that would make things a lot easier from a dispensing standpoint. And from a selection standpoint, um, to have one for all the providers. Versus having to keep up with who has which insurance, um, so I'm definitely in favor of that.
Okay. Steve?
Excuse me, I, I really don't have any thoughts on it. Pardon me, my, my one thought is if we, if we do make a recommendation. I'm not going to be in attendance for the entire MAC meeting next week and I'll need somebody, probably you, Dr. Burchett. As the chairman, to make that. Or, or we can do it at the next meeting, I, I don't mind doing it, I just will not be on for the entire meeting. First one I've missed any part of since I've been on.
Oh. Well, are they doing Zooms?
They are.
Okay, okay, um, well, it may be not. Just as, uh, everybody doing a frame kit, or maybe even just at least is having an option to do one. So.
Dr. Burchette, if I may ask, just to make sure that I understand, um, the, 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 what, what's being proposed. Are you stating that there should be one set of frames that all Medicaid, okay, okay, so.
No, no.
Okay, I'm sorry, then can you restate it? Because I, I, I have a misunderstanding of what you're stating.
I would, I was just thinking that with all of the, um, the adults coming, that are becoming into the, the process. Uh, with the new vision benefit possibly. And the, just the, the way that some people across the state don't, uh, do. Glasses because of reimbursements and things. If we had a situation where the frame kit was optional. As a, as a, as an option versus doing glasses off your board in your office. Uh, from every MCO, that, that that might streamline the process and make it easier for people to want to do glasses for all these recipients.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to think it through, um.
Let me, you all already, you all already do it.
Yes, yes, we do, we offer, um, the frame kits, um, Correct Optical does provide the frame and they also provide the frame kit. So we'll give them to you in a PDF so that you can, you know, reference the picture of them. But then they also do provide physical, um, copy of, of the frames.
Right, right. I would just make him, so it's streamlined with everybody that, that.
Oh, so that everyone does it, okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Any other thoughts on it, anyone?
I, I guess if, if we want to make a recommendation, we need to make, make it very.
Specific.
Specific or clear so that there's no confusion. I mean, we're a little confused on here.
Right, when is next, what's, what's the date of the next MAC meeting, Steve?
Next Thursday seventeenth.
How about, the next one won't be till next year, will it?
Well, it'll be January.
What's everybody's pleasure on it? Do we want to make it now or do we want to wait and make it at the next MAC meeting? Or do we just need to discuss it a little more?
Like, we may. We may, we may need to look and see first, like, when the department comes out with the final ruling. And just what's in their final ruling to see if there's anything else that we would need to make as part of that recommendation. It could be some other component that we're not thinking of. Um, so it might be beneficial for us to wait to see, and that also allows us the flexibility to have some additional discussion on this. So we make sure that when we make a recommendation, it is well thought out and in the best interest of all parties involved.
Yep, no, I'm fine with that. So if everybody's in agreement, then we'll just table that until, um. Our next get together. And, uh, just another general discussion topic. Um, depending on the time that the, the department puts out the adult eyewear, uh, information. I would like to consider possibly calling another MAC meeting for us to discuss those things. Specifically for that.
I think that would be great, man.
Okay. Because that might give us some time to, to get some clarity on things we, we don't understand about it, I thought, so. Well, MAC meetings, uh, seventeenth, you said, Steve. Our next regularly scheduled, um, tack meeting will be February second. Unless we decide to, to call a, a special meeting for the, uh, upcoming adult benefit. That is being finalized, so.
If we don't do that, it'll be the March MAC meeting before we can even make the recommendation. If we don't have a special call meeting.
Right. So I would probably look to, uh. Having that special call meeting, but what, I think we need to hold off until we, the department puts out what, what the benefit will be. And, and how it will be administered and all that stuff, so we can ask questions on it.
And, and we might even want to have our optical people around handy to answer questions. I'm, I'm a little moved from my optical that, uh, you know, I just, I don't know enough about it.
Sure, and that, yeah, that'll be fine. Okay, anybody else before we adjourn? If not, I thank you all for attending, I thank all the, from, everybody for all the information that was provided, uh, today. And look forward to the follow-ups with the other information, uh, that we've requested. Y'all have a good afternoon and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Steve seconds. All in favor? I'm. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Everybody, have a good holiday.